We'll call this public meeting to order. It's now six o'clock and it's Tuesday, September the 2nd, 2025. I would like to note that all councilors are present, although Councilor Emily Lutz will be and is joining us virtually. In the public hearing, the council's role is to hear the staff's presentation as well as comments from the public on the file and information presented. There will be no debate. However, any member of council may ask questions of clarification to either the staff or the public. The first item of business this evening is an application for text amendment to land by law, or land use by law. Laura Moser, our manager of planning services, will be presenting. So, Ms. Moser, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. We are here for a public hearing for a text amendment to the land use by law to permit up to two secondary suites within a one-unit dwelling within the residential one-unit or R1 zone. The prompt for this amendment, normally this is the time where we tell you who the applicant is, but you are the applicant as council, having directed us staff to undertake these amendments as part of the requirements associated with the federal government's Housing Accelerator Program. As part of that, the municipality was awarded $5.9 million as part of the Housing Accelerator Fund in spring of 2024. One of the contractual requirements for that funding is to enable up to four residential units as of right on sewer service residential lots within growth centers. That is what these amendments seek to do. As part of this application, we did conduct some public consultation. We did post notifications of the application on our municipal website and social media. Area towns and villages, as well as all abutting municipalities, were notified by email of the public information meeting and have also been informed of this public hearing this evening. We did schedule a public information meeting, but as no members of the public attended, we did not hold the meeting. However, a presentation was prepared, a recording of a presentation was prepared and posted to our municipal website, oops, and our YouTube, and has been available, at least on YouTube, since that time. No communication has since been received from any abutting municipalities or the public about this application. Currently, our land use by law includes five residential zones within growth centers, and all of those residential zones, with the exception of the residential one-unit or R1 zone, permit up to four units per lot as of right. Currently, the R1 zone permits three units as of right per lot, consisting of the main dwelling, an accessory dwelling, and a secondary suite within the main dwelling. A secondary suite is a self-contained residential unit within the main dwelling, and it can be located either above, below, or beside the main unit as depicted in the images on the screen. These are what planners or developers often call gentle density or low-impact density, because they are taking advantage of an existing structure. The proposed amendments would seek to enable up to two secondary suites within the main dwelling in an R1, in the main dwelling on an R1 lot, along with some other supportive amendments. With regard to the enabling policy, policy 5.3.2 enables you as council to consider amendments to the text of the land use by law, provided it's consistent with the vision, goals, and objectives of the municipal planning strategy. Our municipal planning strategy emphasizes within growth centers a concentration of growth, it being the primary growth centers or primary areas for growth in the municipality, and this would include residential uses. Those residential uses are meant to consist of a broad range of housing choices, including different built forms, and they're meant to contribute to the development of compact, complete communities that provide the necessities for most people's daily lives within a close area. Through this, we're hoping to also develop efficient infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure, that is cost-effective and efficient to maintain, repair, and ultimately replace. A summary of the proposed amendments. The specific amendments were provided in the staff report attached to last council agenda, but in short, they would seek to amend section 4.3.4.1 of the land use by law, which pertains to secondary suites within the residential one-unit zone, and it would be amended to permit up to two secondary suites with all other requirements remaining the same. The amendments also seek to amend the definition of a secondary suite. Currently, the definition points to that that is contained within the National Building Code, however, that would no longer be suitable at this time to enable two within a main dwelling. We've also sought to add amendments in consideration of stormwater management, given that built form could increase. In terms of our process, we did receive a complete application and attempted to hold a public information meeting. Staff conducted their review and made a recommendation through a report to the Planning Advisory Committee. You as council gave us this application first reading at your last council meeting, and we are here at a public hearing this evening. As mentioned, all abutting municipalities have been notified of this public hearing, and a notice was placed on the municipal website in excess of 14 days ago. The statutory requirements of the MGA having been met, we are holding this public hearing, and this will go to second reading later this evening. I would now pass it back to the chair for comments from the public.
Thank you, Ms. Moser. Just to explain to the public once again, council sits in a quasi-judicial capacity for public hearings, so it doesn't engage in debate and doesn't argue with the presenter. So if there's any member of council at this time has any questions to the presenter for clarification, I would entertain that. Councilor Gates.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Laura, just for clarification, with the secondary units, if they were beside at some point, they have to be attached to the primary residence? Is that correct?
Through Mr. Mayor to Councilor Gates, yes. The secondary suite needs to be contained within the same structure as the main dwelling unit.
Okay. Anyone else? Don't see any other lights on, so then we will move on then. Is there any members of the public that wish to address council on this matter? We would ask that you come to the mic, state your name, address for the record, and as a reminder, you would have five-minute maximum time per speaker. Please address your comments to council and not to the presenter. So... Any member of the public? Going once, going twice, gone for the third time. Well, that's good. We'll move on then. It is necessary for everyone to have a good sense of what's being presented by the public. So, I will now open the floor for clarification from council if there's any misunderstandings by any of the councilors before we move on to the next item. Is there any misunderstandings from the council? No. Okay, great. Thank you again, Ms. Moser. We'll move on to the second item. On the agenda is an application to rezone a property at 808 Main Street, Kingston. This will be presented by municipal planner Alice Jacob. Ms. Jacob, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. This application is to legalize and permit the expansion of a sheet metal shop at 808 Main Street, Kingston. The application is for a development agreement. So, a development agreement is a legal contract between the municipality and the property owner. The agreement restricts the property owner to the types of uses and the conditions outlined within the agreement, and the agreement usually runs with the land, which means if the ownership is transferred to a new property owner in the future, the agreement gets transferred to the new owners as well. This is a process we followed for this application. The first step, we received the complete application in January this year, and a public information meeting was held on the 6th of March. Staff reviewed the application following the PIM, and we prepared a report, which was presented to PAC on the 10th of June. PAC forwarded the application to council for initial consideration, and council gave the application initial consideration in July. We are currently at the public hearing. Following the public hearing, council will give a final consideration to the application and will make a decision, following which the application will enter into a 14-day appeal period. The red circle on the map is the approximate location of the property within the growth center of Kingston. And this is a subject property, which is currently developed with a sheet metal shop. So, the property boundaries on this map are not properly aligned. The building is entirely contained within the property. Access to the property is from King Street. King Street is a private right-of-way. The property does not have frontage on a public road. The neighboring uses are mostly commercial, and there are also a few residential uses. To the south, this is the Kingston Rail Trail. So, as I said, the property currently is developed with a sheet metal shop, and there are two trailers on the property, which is used for storage, and there is also a vacant C can, which was previously used for storage. The proposal is to remove the two trailers and the C can and to extend the southern portion of the shop to accommodate storage within the building. The shop is an illegal use, and the structure is a nonconfirming structure, so the expansion cannot be permitted as of right. So, a development agreement is required to facilitate the proposed expansion. And this is a proposed expansion. This is the existing shop, and this is where the trailers and the C can are currently located. This is the proposed addition. So, the reason the shop is illegal is because it is an old railway building, which has existed on the property for many years. In 1995, the building was used for moving and storage purposes, and in 1999, the applicant acquired the property, and in 2001, the sheet metal shop was established within the building. So, when property owners establish a use, they are required to obtain a permit from the municipality, but in this case, the municipality has no records of permit for the shop, making it an illegal use. And it is also illegal because the property is located within the general commercial zone, and sheet metal shop, which are classified as professional trades, is a permitted use within the zone. However, properties are required to have a 50-feet frontage on a public road. As I said earlier, the property does not have frontage on a public road, and so it is a use that cannot be considered as of right on the property. So, as I also said, it is a nonconfirming structure. So, a nonconfirming structure is a structure that maybe met the requirements of the land use by law at the time of permitting, or a structure that predates the bylaw regulations, and as a result, it does not meet the lot requirements of the current land use by law. As I said, it's an old railway building, which predates the 1979 land use by law, which was our very first land use by law. As a result, the structure does not meet the current land use by law, which is the 2019 land use by law requirements. So, just to explain that further, the property is located within the C1 zone, and these are the setback requirements for the C1 zone, which is side setback requirements are 10 feet, and front and rear are 20 feet each. In this case, the property has no frontage on the public road, and it is based on the frontage that we determine the lot lines of a property. As it does not have a frontage, it is challenging to determine the lot line, specifically the front lot line in this case, and the existing setbacks, which are this setback and the northern setback, and also a portion of the eastern setback, are less than the minimum setback requirement, which is 10 feet for the zone. And so, the proposed development agreement is to also permit the expansion of the structure. This is the zoning of the area. The property is within the general commercial zone, which permits a variety of commercial uses, and there is a comprehensive neighborhood development zone to the south, which is for large-scale planned neighborhoods. And this is the area and the neighboring uses. This is the subject property here. To the north, there is a Tim Hortons drive-through, and this is the private right-of-way that currently provides access to the subject property and the neighboring properties in the area. And to the east, there is a gas station, and I also believe there is automotive repair and sales use here. To the south, this is a commercial use, a flea market, which is permitted through a development agreement. This was also an old railway building. And to the west, there is again a commercial use. In terms of public consultation, the public information meeting was held on the 6th of March. The only person present was a village commissioner from the village of Greenwood, who was in favor of the application. The application was presented to the Kingston Village Commission as part of the staff review process on the 9th of April. The commissioners had questions about the existing setbacks of the trailers and the setbacks for the proposed addition. There was also a discussion around the use of trailers as accessory building. So, the DA prohibits the use of trailers and shipping containers on the property for storage. So, the property owners are required to remove the existing trailers and the C can on the property. Moving on to policy review, policy 3.2.9 enables council to consider in all commercial zones proposals for commercial developments that are not otherwise permitted or cannot meet the applicable zone standards through a development agreement. So, council has to be satisfied that the condition that prevents the proposal from being permitted as of right is addressed through a development agreement. In this case, the condition that prevents the proposal is the illegal use, and that is addressed through the development agreement, and the development agreement also permits the expansion of the use and the structure. And council has to also be satisfied that the proposal meets the general development agreement criteria, which is this here. So, we reviewed the proposal against the relevant criteria, such as the proposal's impact on financial, financial impact on the municipality, land use compatibility, the adequacy of fire protection services, equipment, adequacy of sewer and water services, and other relevant criteria within this policy. And it raised no, there were no concerns. The proposal was found to be consistent with the intent of this policy. A summary of the development agreement. So, the DA enables the sheet metal shop within the current building and the proposed building addition, and if destroyed, it enables the buildings to be, the building to be rebuilt in the same location and footprint. The DA also prohibits the use of trailers or shipping containers for storage on the property. And that concludes the presentation. I pass it back to Mr. Mayor for comments from public.
Thank you, Ms. Jacob. Do we have any questions to Ms. Jacob from council? I have one question, Ms. Jacob. In your professional opinion, would you say if this is approved that the removal of those two trailers and additions will be a really nice visual improvement to the immediate area?
I would say so, Mr. Mayor. I have included that within the report as well. I haven't, like, given a detailed explanation here, but the removal of the trailers and the C can would definitely help with the visual appeal of the property.
I kind of thought so. I thought the people in the immediate area would be probably quite pleased. Okay. Now, at this time, I'll move on to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to come forward, state their name and address, and could have a maximum of five minutes for comments? No? All right, we'll move on. I'll go back to council again in case there's anyone would like to raise a concern of clarification to Ms. Jacob. No? Okay, well, that's great. Thanks again, Ms. Jacob. There being no other matters to come before our public hearing, I would declare the public hearing adjourned, and I also note that the public's information on these items are on the agenda of council meeting directly following this hearing for second reading, and you're certainly welcome. certainly welcome to stay. Thanks again. And now, we will move on to our September the second council meeting. And so I'll declare that for roll call, that all members of council are present, and again, that Councilor Emily Lutz is joining us virtually. So we'll move on. We do have an agenda in front of you, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda, please. Moved by Counselor Gates, second by Deputy Mayor Peckford. All those in favor of, or against, please vote accordingly. Okay, motion carried unanimously, and now we will move on to disclosure of conflict of interest. Is there any member of council considers they have a conflict of interest in any of the items that we're discussing this evening? Okay, I don't see any concerns there. So we shall move on now for approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. So the first, first one is July the eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Could I get a motion, please, to approve those minutes? Moved by Counselor Allen, second by Counselor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. Motion carried. Now we have the July twenty-second special council meeting, and I'm looking for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor McPherson, second by Counselor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. Okay, motion carried. So we'll move on to business arising for the minutes, and July the eighth. Is there any business arising from the meeting on July eighth from council? Okay. All right, we'll move on to July twenty-second. Is there any business arising from any member of council for that meeting? Okay, all right. Planning Advisory Committee Recommendations. Counselor Emily Lutz is going to read the recommendations, this chair. The first one is application for a land use bylaw text amendment, file twenty-five dash zero nine, Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, Mayor. The motion reads that municipal council give second reading to and hold a public hearing regarding the amendments to the text of the land use bylaw to enable two secondary suites within a one-unit dwelling in the residential one unit, R one zone, and the associated amendments, as described in Appendix A of the report dated June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I so move.
Thank you. Second by Counselor Allen. Okay, any further questions? No? All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner. Okay, motion carried. Next one is six B, application to enter into a development agreement in Kingston, file twenty-five dash zero three, Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, Mayor. The motion reads that municipal council give second reading to and hold a public hearing regarding entering into a development agreement to legalize and permit the expansion of a professional trade on the property located at eight zero eight Main Street, PID five five one two two one seven zero, Kingston, which is substantively the same, save for minor differences in form, as the draft set out in the Appendix E of the report dated June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I so move.
Okay. And do we have a seconder, please? Second by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. Okay, motion carried. Thank you. And do we have a date for our next public hearing?
We do. The next public hearing will be Tuesday, October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, at six P M. there in chambers.
Great. Thank you very much, Counselor Lutz. And now we shall move on to item number seven, administration, a new policy, H R dash zero six dash zero two four, pensions adoption. And we're looking for, we're going to be looking for a motion to adopt a new policy with seven days' notice given on July twenty-second, that municipal council adopt H R zero six two four pensions as attached to the September second, two thousand and twenty-five council agenda. We have a mover. Move by Counselor Sappington, second by Counselor Hiltz. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. Okay, motion carried. Item seven B, new policy admin zero one two five, land acknowledgement adoption. We'll be looking for a motion to adopt the new policy with seven days' notice on July twenty-second, that municipal council adopt policy admin dash zero one dash zero two five land acknowledgement as attached in the September the second, two thousand and twenty-five council agenda. Do I have a mover, please? Move by Counselor McPherson, second by Counselor Harding. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. Okay, motion carried. And item seven C, I believe the clerk, Yanni Postima, will be presenting a proclamation request from the National Dental Care Day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. We received a request from the National Dental Care Day Foundation, which is a nonprofit organization committed to improving access to oral health care for underserviced communities. And National Dental Care Day is a public awareness campaign calling on dental professionals across Canada to open their clinics for one day of free care on October the tenth. And this is the first time that we've received this proclamation request, and the recommended motion is that municipal council proclaim October tenth, two thousand and twenty-five to be National Dental Care Day in the municipality of the County of Kings.
Moved by Counselor Best, second by Counselor, Deputy Mayor Peckford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please signify in the usual manner. Okay, motion carried. Moving along to item eight, engineering and public works. We're looking for a briefing that's included in the agenda, and then we'll, we'll look for a motion to accept that in the end, an update on sewer, or regional sewer. You're doing that? Okay. And C A O Conrod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. So in your package, there's a one-page briefing here as an update that was actually prepared in tandem with our manager, Martin Keough, who is over on the left here for this evening. So we've carved this up into one, two, three, four categories, plant operations, de-sludging update, plant optimization, and future reporting. So in terms of plant operations, you've heard either Mr. Keough or myself, or Director Carrigan speak to the fact that we had dissolved oxygen problems in the lagoon, or the lagoons, in that the oxygen level wasn't keeping up with the strength of the incoming waste, which caused an odor problem. So we've installed, reconfigured, installed new and reconfigured existing blowers, and they appear to be operating per the design specifications. EPW or Engineering and Public Works are working on the potential installation of additional strings of oxygen diffusers in Lagoons one and two. And we have received some odor complaints, which have been investigated by Mr. Keough, and believed to be related to seasonal farm operations and not the, and not odor emanating out of the regional plant. My understanding is the regional plant has been odor-free now for probably in excess of a month. In terms of a de-sludging update, which is a critical part going forward, is we have engaged DFL to de-sludge Lagoons two and remove materials from the five existing geotubes. So if you're coming across the connector, you'll see these five large objects to one end of the treatment plant. So they have been de-watering now for a couple of years. So the contract is to go in and remove the materials from those five geotubes and to also de-sludge Lagoon two. It's a per-unit base contract. We think it's going to be within budget, and we're kind of hopeful that we'll, we'll have a bit of free or excess funds that we can expand beyond just cell two. But because it's a per-unit contract, we really don't know that at this point in time. The contract is going to start later this month. I was going to say next month, but we're now into September, so this month. Perhaps, I don't know about mobilization and whatnot, but we're anticipating like mid-September, September the fifteenth. Mr. Keough is acknowledging that. And the contractor is going to be responsible for the de-sludging operation and actually removal and disposal. And part of that contract is disposal at a certified landfill site in West Hans, so it's probably about as close as we can get it. So that basically is on the de-sludging. Of course, we're going to run some radio advertisements and social media. I believe it's already on social media. Radio, radio spots will start closer to the de-sludging operation. And we don't anticipate any smell. We defer this to the cooler weather. Now, the fall, still pretty warm today, but it's certainly a little better than what it was a couple of weeks ago. The last couple of times we've done major de-sludging, there actually hasn't been any odor, but there's always the, there's always a chance that there will be odor. So we're going to advise the public of what we're doing. The plant optimization study, so that's sort of addressing and getting us on an odor-free and regulatory compliance track now, today. There are, as we've articulated in the past, some significant problems with regional. And so in that regard, we did, as reported previously, we commissioned a rather in-depth, what's referred to as a pre-design report. And the consultant right now is looking at various things that's in effect today. In particular, they're going to be analyzing the strength of influence to formulate recommendations. So we have ordered and received, I believe, six composite samplers, and those automated composite samplers will be able to gauge and report to the engineers the strength of the influence or waste entering the plant. And as I understand from a layperson, what the process engineers will look at is that what technology is needed to deal with the type of strength that we're receiving at regional. Again, last year, our professional consultant said our problem was we were out of balance between dissolved oxygen levels and the, and the strength of the influence. So that's what needs to be addressed. That's being administered mainly through the technical subcommittee of the Regional Sewer Committee. So that is comprised of staff members, engineers primarily from the village of the Minus and the town of Kentville are joining our engineering team here, and they'll, they'll work with the consultant to bring that study forward with recommendations, and we anticipate that those recommendations will be tabled with you in the spring of two thousand and twenty-six, so this coming spring. Future reporting to municipal council, unless we sort of hear otherwise, the thought is that we would come back to municipal council, but only in the sense if there's a material change in operations. So for example, we are in compliance now with the regulations and the statutes, and we seem to be odor-free. So we would come back to council if there was a material change in that, just as an update, or if we require some type of amendment on contractual and financial matters. So we are spending planned, it's planned spending, it's not on spend, but it's a significant amount of money, and of course, it's always contingent on tendering and procurement events. So if there's any change there under our procurement policy, you may see us again. But other than that, we would, we would report through the regional, the regional committee, which Counselor Harding is the chair of the Regional Sewer Committee. Of course, those meetings are open to the public, and the dates are posted on the municipality's website. So regular reports will be provided to the Regional Sewer Committee Chair to Council. I can say that we will keep our website up to date on the regional system, and for example, subject to your comments here on this briefing, we will post something tomorrow about the briefing and try to keep folks up to date. Myself or Martin would be, in particular, Martin, would be happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Conrod, and open for questions. Counselor Best.
Thank you, Mayor. To whoever would like to answer that. We're going to clean out pond number two. What was the cost to clean out pond number two?
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Best, that came in at four hundred and seventy thousand.
Thank you. And also, just a follow-up question, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, how many tenders did we have out for that? How many people tendered?
We just had the one tender where, where it is in an emergency, or sorry, no, no tender. It was an emergency services to get that cleaned out, so we did proceed.
So I can, I can comment, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like. So we, we did go to tender on other events, and they were the leading tender, and they were the, they were the bidder last year. So because of mobilization and demobilization, it was deemed that they would be the most efficient contractor to do that work.
Yes, I understand that, but this been going on for three months, four months, and we didn't send out to tender?
No, we, we tendered as part of the budgetary process for, correct me if I'm wrong here, Aylesford.
Waterville.
Pardon me?
Waterville.
Waterville?
Yep.
Hans border in that, was in that tender?
No.
So Aylesford and?
Waterville and then?
Waterville.
And then regional.
And regional. So they, they were on contract before, so we extended the contract.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Best. Counselor Sappington.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that we found somewhere local to take it, as opposed to all the way to New Brunswick. I will form this in the form of a question, just because I feel like we need to say it for all my constituents or residents that aren't on the social media. So the de-sludging will start September fifteenth. From the treatment plant via Jones Road, it will take seven days a week, day and night, for two to three weeks, correct?
That would be my understanding.
It's what's on the Facebook right now, so I'm just confirming for the people that's not on Facebook.
Looking at the contract, but Mr. Keough is also agreeing, yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor McPherson.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Through you, thank you very much, C A O, as well as Mr. Carrigan and Mr. Keough, for your urgency in this matter. It certainly was a contentious matter for quite some time for the residents living there, and it's great to have this possible report. My question is, will we have an update on the noise issue in the Hans border, the fan issue in Hans border, and where we are with that this evening?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council. Absolutely, if you wish, after we, perhaps after we finish this, we can make comment on that. I would point out, just as an addition of the last couple of comments, I just remind council, it is a per-unit base contract. council, it is a per-unit-based contract. So it's based on sonar technology, so we went in and measured these lagoons. So it's a point in time when you do that measurement. So coming back, when he, when, when Manager Keough mentioned the price, that's subject to per-unit adjustments. And it's also, they add polymer, and it's based on what they refer to as bone-dry tons. So there's some variability in that. It's, it's a calculated, it's a calculation in terms of the amount of what they're paid on. It's not a lump-sum-based contract. So it could come in above or below that amount, depending on what's realized.
Thank you, Mr. Conrod. And the only, the quick comment that I'll make before we go to the, to the motion is that recently, it's kind of disappointing that some of the negative comments that were pointed towards our staff and council for what was recently the farmers spreading what they do every year in the Annapolis Valley on their fields, and you can't blame the farmers for that. But unfortunately, I know that the staff worked hard to try and get the smell into Minus under control, or under control. And when they, they finally did, and they were still getting criticized for something that had nothing to do with it. And I, I just want to bring that up, that sometimes people are quick to criticize when they don't have the facts. And I, I just want to say to the staff that some of the comments were very unfortunate. All right, we'll, we do have a, a motion to be presented here. Maybe we can take care of that, and then we'll, or do you want to do the, discuss Hansboarder first?
Mr. Mayor, my suggestion would be to do this motion and then discuss Hansboarder, but I defer to you, obviously, as chair.
Well, we'll, we'll do that then, that the municipal council, that municipal council receive the regional sewer update briefing as attached to the September the 2nd, 2025 council agenda for information. Move by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. And now you would like to comment, CAO Conrod, on the Hansboarder situation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to council, and I, and I certainly would welcome any input that Manager Keough wants to provide on this, but it's something him and I have been discussing over the last several weeks, so I think I, I have a grasp at least of the main issues here. So not unlike regional, we have, we had experienced some odor in the community, and we were operating offside of regulation, of provincial operating approvals. And it's not unlike other communities in the province that have been experiencing these problems. I can't speak for those, but for us, it seems that the common point is matching the amount of dissolved oxygen that's going into the system to offset and properly aerate the strength of the influence coming into the system. So to deal with that odor problem, we had to modify blowers to increase the air and the dissolved oxygen amounts in the, in the lagoons. The odor has been reduced. That prompted us that we were running two blowers, but it created an electrical tripping of the system. It was too much of a draw. And so we tried to mod, first tried to modify those configurations to reduce noise, but we weren't successful. We, we were forced basically to, to run at lower air output, which reduced the odor, but it's not exactly, I had a bit of time getting my head around this, but running at less CFM actually caused the noise. But we need to run at that level in order to be in compliance with regulatory and get the oxygen in the water. So we, we had to do that. We reduced the blow, any reduction of the blowers any further, we expect, strongly suspect that the odor would come back. And so the obvious question is, why are we experiencing the odor? And again, it's the same thing, climate change, much warmer springs, and also the, perhaps the amount of, and strength of material that's being delivered to the plant, and that not being in balance with the amount of air that we're putting in the plant. So what was the solution? We ordered, I believe, two 50-horsepower motors to give more output, to eliminate the noise. And we also ordered some, a custom silencer for the blower line. Unfortunately, we encountered what a lot of people are encountering in the construction trades today, is we had supply chain issues. So the custom 50-horsepower motors had been delayed, but those are actually, they're, they're in now, they have arrived, and they actually have been installed. We then had to, while we were waiting for those, we had to receipt those, and then we had to design and have custom fabricated bases for those larger motors. So those are also in place, designed and in place. Now we're waiting for, I believe, pulleys and belts that are required to drive everything. And so the third point is the silencer. So the rest of it, we have there, with the exception now of the pulleys and the belts. And the silencer is on expedited delivery, and I think September 5th to 9th was our discussion of when we expect delivery of that silencer. So that's basically where we are. We're, we're, you know, obviously, I'm not sure, you know, anyone that's listening in, or I'm not sure if these folks here are from Hansboarder. We apologize for the, the odor and the noise. Trying to do our best with the, with the bases and the 50-horsepower motor and the silencer to, now that we seem to have the odor in check, and seem to be trending the right way, I believe, in regulatory compliance, is now to deal with, finally deal with subsides of the noise. So that's kind of where we are in the whole thing.
Okay, thank you.
Happy to take any questions.
All right. All right, so now's the time, if you have any questions on the Hansboarder situation, to ask questions. It's not a time to debate with staff, it's a time to ask the staff any further clarification. Counselor Sappington.
I'm not an engineer, so I'm asking, that study that we've commissioned for the Regional Sewer, is that also including Hansboarder, or is it just for the one in New Minus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Counselor Sappington. That study for regional is specific to regional, but what I will say is we're using the same engineering firms have been, we've been consulting with them about Hansboarder in these solutions.
Thank you.
So we rely heavily on our operators and our own in-house expertise, but we reached out to those process engineers on, I know of at least multiple occasions, helped us with design and whatnot and specs.
Thank you.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to our CAO, Scott Conrod. So shortly after the 9th, a couple of days, we should be rid of that sound completely? The noise? The parts are going to arrive on the 9th?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor, and I might look for a nod here from, from Manager Keough. It seems like he should be saying something here this evening. So my understanding, they're arriving, but what I, but what I don't know is the length of time it'll take to put the silencer on. I'm assuming the belts and the pulleys are relatively, you know, an hour or a couple of hours. How long would it take to get the silencer installed on the bike?
We would just have to weld a couple of flanges and install the silencer, so it would take probably four or five hours to do that, a day to have it in place, so.
Sounds like good news.
We're hoping.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Okay, well, that's good. We'll, we'll move on, and that was a, a great update on, on both New Minus and Hansboarder. And now we'll move on to financial services. And our Director of Finance and IT, Mike Livingston, is going to present deed transfer bylaw and reserve policy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As mentioned, I'm here to present some information on deed transfer tax, the related bylaw, a potential policy, and our next steps. So the intent or rough agenda for what I'll present to you. First, introduce deed transfer tax to council, and really what I mean here is just formally, I'm sure all of you are familiar with deed transfer tax, but I just mean in the context of here at a municipal council meeting. I'll recap some previous decisions of council and highlight potential uses for deed transfer tax revenue, discuss the implementation of related policy, illustrate financial implications, and then seek to receive instruction on next steps. So first, the introduction, the basics. Detransfer tax is enabled through the Municipal Government Act, Part 5, Sections 101 through 110. The tax is triggered through property transactions with the amount determined based on the sale price of the property and a rate established by bylaw, but cannot exceed 1.5%. There are certain types of property transactions that are exempt from deed transfer tax. The exemptions are determined within the Municipal Government Act. That's at Section 109. You get a full list of those exemptions, but some examples include deeds transferred between married individuals, including the division of assets between formerly married people, deeds transferred by way of gift for nominal consideration, so that would be usually like a $1 transfer, deeds given by way of tax sale, and deeds transferred before the effective date of the bylaw for deed transfer tax. Little info on deed transfer tax in Nova Scotia. So Appendix A to the RFD lists the rates that are currently in place throughout the province. Some comparator municipalities include the municipality of Colchester, which uses a 1.5% deed transfer tax rate, West Hans Regional Municipality also with a 1.5% rate, and the municipality of the District of Lunenburg at 1.25%. As of July 1st, 2024, when the town of Campbell established their deed transfer tax bylaw, the municipality is now the only Nova Scotia municipality without a deed transfer tax. So now to talk through some of the previous decisions of the council before this one. So back in July 2024, Committee of the Hall recommended first reading of a proposed deed transfer tax bylaw through to municipal council. Later that same day, July 2024, municipal council tabled a motion to give first reading in order to allow staff to return with some additional information and allow more members of council to be present for the, the reading and related discussion and debate. Later that year, September 2024, that same motion was brought back with an updated presentation from staff. It was then re-tabled so it could be brought back to the newly elected council, so yourselves. So some potential uses for deed transfer tax. First bullet point here lists filtering through a reserve, and I'll have more on that on the next slide, but I just wanted to mention it quickly because the use of a reserve of some kind will certainly be necessary, at least from a timing perspective of how the deed transfer tax could possibly be used. But some potential uses would include preparing for and offsetting significant capital expenditures. We'll have some examples of the types of things that, that could be used later on in the slides on that specific use. Covering annual debt payments when and if necessary. So there's a couple scenarios that relate to what I just mentioned, where there could be some debt requirements and deed transfer tax could be a good way to offset those needs. Could be used to support stability in the general tax rate or the municipal sewer rate. And then allocation of deed transfer tax revenue into reserve to cover future needs, whatever those could be, that could be unanticipated or, or planned activities. So now to speak on the deed transfer tax reserve. So the use of a deed transfer tax reserve could, like I said, achieve a benefit of being able to properly time out the use of those reserves. It could establish parameters such as the annual allocations to that reserve, target balances of the reserve, perhaps some parameters around borrowing. I skipped utilization and eligible uses of reserves. That could, that would also be an item that could be set out in the policy. And then reporting requirements. So it makes it really clear and easy to, to have accountability over the funds when you have them specifically set away in a reserve and being used specifically from that reserve. It's, it's likely that we could look at the existing municipal reserve policy and make amendments to introduce specific provisions to deed transfer tax, or a separate standalone reserve policy could also be established to cover that particular stream of revenue. So financial implications. A capital financing, financing scenario was prepared to examine the differing levels of deed transfer tax, and that would include a scenario with no deed transfer tax, and working solely with the general tax rate and municipal sewer rates, and seeing how things would shape up within that scenario. So the scenario looks at two major capital expenditures over the next three to five years, one being the municipality's participation in the construction of a regional recreation facility, estimated somewhere around $13,250,000, and upgrades within the regional sewer system, the municipal share being somewhere around the range of $6,250,000. And on the following slide, I've got a table that are going to compare various, I think, key metrics for the different circumstances, varying levels of deed transfer tax and then without. It'll talk about the impact on the average ratepayer, that could be either the average property seller slash buyer, or the average taxpayer, depending on the circumstances. It'll look at the estimated interest costs of the various scenarios in the context of those significant capital expenditures, and it'll also look at the, the potential for accumulating reserves to either strategically allocate over a period of time, or to accumulate and, and have available as needs arise. So on this slide, shifted a little bit to accommodate the, the video feed. Little difficult to, to read, but I'll walk you through it, starting from the left-hand side. We have Scenario 1, working through to the right, Scenario 4. Scenario 1 is looking at a 1.5% deed transfer tax. 2 is a 1%, and then another step down at a half percent to just, yeah, just a half percent in Scenario 3. And then Scenario 4 is looking at no deed transfer and only working within the confines of the general tax rate and the regional, sorry, just the general sewer rate. So rate implications, the average deed transfer tax at 1.5%, looking at some data that we received for sales in 2024. At 1.5%, the average deed transfer tax would be $5,267. Dropping down to 1%, it's $3,512. And then in Scenario 3, at half a percentage, $1,756. Of course, there's no impact in Scenario 4 without the introduction of a deed transfer tax. Changes in the residential tax rate, only applicable in the fourth scenario, and it would, we forecast the need for a 2% increase, or just under 2 cents per $100 of assessment. And on the average tax assessment, which is detailed in our budget document, the, that average ratepayer would have an increase of $34.82, so that, that would be every So that would be every single taxpayer on average at that amount. Then looking at the required changes in the municipal sewer rate. Once again, only applicable in Scenario 4 because there's no need to adjust those rates within the scenarios 1, 2, and 3. An increase of $51 required on that blended sewer rate or 8.5% increase in order to facilitate those capital expenditures. So some of the next measures here that were pulled out was the total interest cost that would be required in the circumstances of those capital purchases. So within a 1.5% detransfer tax scenario, there's sufficient time and revenue generating capacity to completely avoid the need for long-term debt to finance those significant purchases. In Scenario 2, with a 1% rate, it's just a little over $3 million of total interest cost. And then in Scenario 3, at a half a percentage point, it's roughly $8.5 million of interest cost. In Scenario 4, with the general rate increases and the sewer rate increase, there'd be almost $10.5 million of that revenue being generated and directed into interest charges. Over the course of 10 years, the capacity to accumulate reserve for the detransfer tax at the 1.5% scenario, it's nearly $50 million. In Scenario 2, at 1%, just under $28 million. In Scenario 3, at half a percentage point, not quite $9 million. And then in Scenario 4, without using detransfer tax, it'd be a negligible reserve, just a little over half a million dollars. The final line sort of illustrates the distribution of where that revenue gets allocated. So looking across, you can see declining amounts getting allocated towards the capital expenditure itself and greater amounts up to 35% in Scenario 4 that end up getting allocated just to the cost of long-term debt. So just a quick overall, mostly focused on that Scenario 1. Application of a detransfer tax would allow the municipality to cover substantial short-to-midterm capital expenditures without the need to adjust the general tax and sewer rates. Setting the rate at the 1.5% mark eliminates the need to rely on long-term debt. And over 10 years, we generate a reserve of over $48 million, which could be governed by possibly a policy established by council. So then the recommendation. As I sort of recapped before, there is still the tabled motion of the previous council. This is not to bring forward that motion at this time, but rather to seek instruction from council. So I'll re-deverbatim that municipal council instruct the CAO to return to municipal council on October 7th, 2025 with a draft detransfer tax bylaw and accompanying detransfer tax reserve policy. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have on the topic.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. And now's an opportunity for council to ask Mr. Livingston questions. It's not time to enter into debate. If we get the motion on floor, that's the time to debate the motion. But this is ask questions of clarification on the presenter. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Thank you very much for the presentation. I have three very brief questions to begin with. I think I can surmise by your exemption list, but I do want to pose the question for clarification. I die tomorrow in my will. I leave my properties to my children. The deed is transferred to my children from myself. Is that an exemption?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know the answer to that specifically. I'm certainly not the expert on the legislative side of it. I'd want to take that away at the answer, sorry.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Secondly, just clarification. You indicated that in September of 2024 was the last presentation on detransfer tax to council. We re-elected at the end of October 2024. My memory isn't as sharp as it once was, but I don't recall having a presentation on detransfer tax. Am I accurate with that? We as a council, have we had a presentation on detransfer tax?
No, through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. This is the first time. It's been brought before municipal council.
And finally, I would be interested in hearing the percentage of the detransfer tax in the larger municipalities such as HRM, Cape Breton, East Hans, for a comparison purpose. Thank you.
I can certainly, through you, Mr. Mayor, provide some of those rates. If you're just willing to bear with me a moment.
No problem.
So Halifax Regional Municipality utilizes a 1.5% detransfer tax. The municipality of the District of East Hans also uses 1.5%. Was there another specific?
Cape Breton's the only other, please. Thank you.
Cape Breton Regional Municipality utilizes a 1.5% detransfer tax. And in fact, the majority of the list utilize 1.5%.
Thank you for answering my questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor McPherson. Deputy Mayor Beckford.
Thank you. Thank you through you, Mayor. Director Livingston, fantastic presentation as always. Thank you. I just have a few quick questions. Not so much about the implication of detransfer tax on the municipality, but more so on residents and just the relation to their ability to pay it. Just the first one. Can you confirm that a detransfer tax cannot be rolled into a mortgage and must be paid in cash at closing of a property?
I can't unfortunately. Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know the, as I mentioned, I'm not the expert on the legislative side. I'm not sure if the CAO would be able to speak to that or not.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I would want to, I would want to do a little consulting on the legislation. I would be surprised to, I will say I will be surprised, and I will report back but to answer Counselor McPherson and the deputy mayor's questions, I would say Counselor McPherson, they would be exempt. And yes, it can be rolled into the mortgage, but I want to confirm both.
Thank you. Just trying to bring some context to it, more so as I mentioned for average residents.
I think it would also depend with a deputy mayor on your percentage. So if you bought a home for $400,000 and you were getting a 75% mortgage, you know, and maybe you only needed $200,000 and your detransfer tax was going to add $5,000 onto the purchase, obviously you could, but it would depend on if you were looking for a 95% mortgage and you were up to your maximum percentage limit. But that would be a problem whether you wanted to vote and buy new appliances or whatever.
Typically in Nova Scotia, it's paid in cash upfront and not rolled into mortgages. Second question. For households earning $58,000 a year, which is the lower end of incomes in Kings County, buying a modest home of $250,000 would mean a detransfer tax of roughly $3,000 in context to the percentage that we're suggesting. That would represent nearly 6% of the annual income for households in Kings County. Do you consider that affordable for households in Kings County?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's not something that I've specifically taken away and considered in terms of from an affordability perspective. At a certain point, you know, it just becomes part of the cost of purchasing a home and you have to look at it as a whole package. And I guess to quickly also loop back on the previous question in terms of timing of the paying of it and the notion of looping it into the mortgage. I mean, certainly it is collected by the municipality upfront, but the requirement of that individual to pay it, you know, if it is looped into the mortgage, then of course they're paying it off in that method versus it, you know, out of pocket immediately for them in a certain sense, if you understand what I mean.
Absolutely. And once again, thank you. Just mostly just put context into the average person. I know it's easy to discuss these numbers on the higher level for the municipality, but just like to remind, you know, the average citizen what it would cost them. I just have two more quick ones. First-time homebuyers are already struggling the most to save for a down payment and closing costs. If this tax moves forward, would there be any provisions or relief for new homeowners who are looking to put down roots and call Kings County home?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The exemptions are set out in the Municipal Government Act. It's not necessarily, we're not necessarily at liberty to introduce new exemptions. We've done a review of other municipal government bylaws and have found no additional exemptions introduced. It could certainly open up undesirable loopholes or unintended activity of individuals. And so sticking with the word of the Municipal Government Act, municipal government act, sorry, is, I think, advisable.
And finally, on that same $250,000 home, the new homebuyer's property assessment would reset to today's full market value compared to what the previous owner had been paying. While the previous owner may have been protected by the cap program, would you agree that this means the new buyer already faces higher annual property taxes than the seller did and thus adding to the coffers of the municipality? If so, do you think adding a detransfer tax on top of that would deter new homeowners from entering the market?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe there would be a deterrence effect. We haven't seen any type of effect like that in our previous examinations. And, you know, the notion of lifting the cap is a bit of a somewhat moot point in the consideration since it would be the case with or without detransfer tax. So certainly it's the layering on of a due tax to any property purchaser, of course.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And we'll move on.
Mayor, just hoping you could add me to the queue if you don't mind.
Okay, we'll get Counselor Sappington and then Counselor Lutz. You'll go after Counselor Sappington.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I too am very concerned about our average citizens. So I am looking at the scenarios. And so you're saying that if we were to use a detransfer tax, it would be a way for us to avoid raising property taxes and sewer rates, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct.
Thank you. I also was wondering, do you find that when we are seeking help for funding from different levels of government, that when they see that we are the only municipality, being the third largest municipality and not using the detransfer tax, that the government, provincial government feels that they have indeed given us the tools to help ourselves and we're not using them? Have you felt that sentiment at all?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Sappington. I don't think it's had any negative ramifications in those funding-type relationships that you had mentioned. Yeah, that's not something I've observed.
Do we find that with huge projects like perhaps the regional sewer system or the regional recreation facility, when you're seeking funding, don't we have to upfront cost maybe depending 30 to 50%? This would in fact help us be able to do that and then get matched funding? And so if we don't have those resources, we can't take advantage of those sorts of funding?
Yeah, through you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a fair statement overall. Very few other government funding streams provide upfront payment. It's cost recovery and the municipality is required to bear the cost of a significant capital project upfront and then submit for claims throughout the process to receive that funding. And of course, that funding is hardly ever, almost never 100% and there's always a municipal share of those costs.
So if we don't have that, in layman's terms, if we're the only municipality that doesn't have the detransfer tax and we're the third largest municipality, would we be in fact shooting ourselves in the foot?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Perhaps I could just point counsel to the table in my presentation that indicates the amount of interest cost of not having various levels of detransfer tax in place and just allow that to speak to the.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sappington. Okay, Counselor Lutz, you have a question for Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. I just have two questions if I could. Just in reference to the chart provided earlier in the presentation, you noted the four separate scenarios. In this scenario that doesn't include a detransfer tax, there's a noted increase in the residential tax rate. Am I correct in saying that, that there's a 2% increase in the scenario, Scenario 4, where there is no detransfer tax implemented?
That's correct, through you, Mr. Mayor. 2% increase in the general tax rate.
So that's a 2% increase. And I noticed just that you didn't provide a fifth scenario where there is no residential tax increase. Is there a reason for that? Do you foresee a requirement in raising the residential tax rate?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's a delicate balance, the amount of long-term debt that you end up relying upon and, you know, simply accumulating that much more debt upfront will more likely than not necessitate an increase in the future. So I honestly can't foresee a scenario that doesn't include a rate increase, at least within the confines of the scenario that I prepared.
Okay, thank you. And just one more if I could. Just in relation to this motion, which is regarding a bylaw and a reserve policy for a detransfer tax. In my understanding, a detransfer tax policy is what we make it. So there can be all kinds of provisions included in a bylaw that would address certain things like what Counselor McPherson raised earlier regarding estate transactions and what Deputy Mayor referenced earlier, like first-time homebuyers. So there's a balance, is there a balance between what the MGA allows us? Is there, because my question is, is there a lot of flexibility within the MGA? And I know you're not a legislation expert. Appreciate that. But are there ways within this policy that we can address some of the concerns being raised by counselors today around affordability and that type of thing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I should speak too much to the topic. Just as you mentioned, I don't have the true authority in the matter. But what I've gathered in discussing among staff is that it would not be advisable to introduce new exemptions beyond what is specifically called for by the Act.
The Municipal Government Act.
That's correct, sorry.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Lutz. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is directed towards you. My understanding is if we pass this tonight, that in the district meetings, and there'd be one in each of the nine districts, that this will be one of the topics on the agenda for the public to ask questions? Did I see that somewhere?
Well, the public, I guess Counselor Allen can ask whatever questions they want, but, you know, how we're going to fund it or how much it's going to cost or whatever. So I can't anticipate what they're going to ask. They can ask just about anything.
Right. I just thought that's one of the opportunities. We were going to allow the public to attend these district meetings to ask whatever questions they want about that.
I don't think the district meeting was, is intended, Counselor, to make a decision on detransfer tax and/or the wellness center. I think it's to bring people up to date on where we are and what we're doing. To answer your question.
But it would give them an opportunity to ask us questions.
Absolutely.
That's basically what I, just so the public knows that they'll have an opportunity.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Best.
Well, I'm very confused now. If we pass this tonight, it's over.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We're not talking about passing this. The motion isn't on the floor. If you've got any questions on the presentation, Counselor Best.
Well, I just, I just listened to my colleague over here saying that at the public meeting, they'll have a say in it. That's not true, in my opinion.
No, no, that wasn't what he said. Can the public ask questions about this? And I said absolutely.
So once we get this on the floor, then we can speak about it.
Correct.
I'll keep my comments till then.
Well, then that's the proper order. Thank you. I have a question for you. I don't see any other lights on. My question is that part of the detransfer tax could be used for reserves, reserves like the wellness center, reserves for if we have to replace this sewer, the whole system down there. I've heard numbers thrown out like 50, $100 million. So bottom line is the detransfer tax is kind of like a reserve. That would be my first question. And then do we need reserves? Or do, I guess really the question is, do you feel we have enough reserves now?
To you, Mr. Mayor. Set out in our budget document for the fiscal '25, '26 year, you can see a little bit of a analysis of the municipality's reserves. And specifically for our capital reserves, you can see that relative to the policy recommended balance of those reserves, that the forecasted balance at the end of the fiscal period will be 54% of what that recommended balance is. So currently underfunded by nearly one half of the amount that is recommended by our policy. On the operating reserve side of things, we're currently sitting at 29% of our annual operating expenditures. There's a financial condition indicator from the province that suggests that we should be targeting 20% and greater. That 9% over the 20 target is roughly translate to $4.5 million of reserves. There's a sizable chunk of that that's spoken for, for specific initiatives. It leaves wiggle room of somewhere under $2 million. That would allow us to remain onside with that financial condition indicator. So generally speaking, our capital reserves are quite a bit behind. The operating reserve is in the range.
Okay. So I guess my next question then would be, so would it be safe to say if our capital reserves are quite a bit behind, if we don't implement a detransfer tax down the road, it's very possible we're going to have to raise taxes and/or borrow money to bring those reserves up to where they should be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think generally speaking, that statement is true, the increase of the tax rate and.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we have a recommendation in front of you, counsel. And it goes as follows, that the municipal council instruct the CAO to return to municipal council on October the 7th, 2025 with a draft detransfer tax bylaw and an accompanying detransfer tax reserve policy. Now, if we approve that, that means that the CAO would bring that back. And at that time, we would then have discussion whether we approve it or disapprove it. But bottom line is, if we approve this or not, we're sending them away to put the thing together. So do we have a mover to that recommendation? Moved by Counselor McPherson. Do I have a second? Second by Counselor Sappington. Okay, it's been duly moved and second. And now is an opportune time for counselors to enter into debate on this recommendation. And including you, Counselor Lutz, at any time you wish. Okay.
Just pop me in the queue anywhere. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. All right. We've got, what happened to you, Counselor Best? You're going to wait a little while. Okay. All right. All right. Counselor Sappington.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I represent U minus. And we had a very difficult year with the sewer system. And it is very real to us that the studies might come back with possibly fixes that we might need a lot of money for. And so this is a very real situation. And for me, I, the main scenario that I want to avoid is putting an undue burden on my residents in regards to property taxes and sewer rates. Thank you.
Correct, Counselor Sappington. But I will tell you, you do represent that district. But now you're all part of the whole now too. Okay. Anyone else?
I can go, Mayor.
I got Counselor Best got his light on here. Counselor Best.
Thank you. So we vote in favor of this tonight. That is just saying that the CEO go back and make something up and bring it back. It's not a done deal. If we vote yes on this tonight, it's not a done deal.
Correct. He, it says that he would draft a detransfer tax bylaw and accompany a detransfer tax reserve policy. And then at that time, counsel would make a decision whether they like that, don't like it, or want something different. But what we're doing tonight is telling them yes, we're interested, put it together.
Okay. Well, I'm going to say I'm not interested in it. And I won't be voting for if that's the case. I ran a campaign, very simple, no detransfer tax. And a lot of the colleagues around this table had the same vision that I had, no detransfer tax. And Mr. Mayor, you know well and who I'm talking about, that the detransfer tax, I'd like to keep it the same. It's always been, we are in the toughest times in Kings County in 35 years. I talked to a lot of contractors. I have talked to a lot of people who selling houses, real estate people, and there none of them afford it. I worry about county of Kings. People are laying people off. Our biggest employee in Kings County is laying people off. And they're talking about closing down for a few days. So putting a detransfer tax in, I just think it would be awfully hard for new young people to try to own a house. Young people now is struggling. Everybody's struggling. I don't care who it is. We're all struggling. The cost of everything and throw another tax on top of that, I think we are not doing justice to Kings County. So I will not be voting for this tonight. And I'm not interested in detransfer tax. I ran on that as a campaign and I'm going to continue to run. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Best. Because you used my name, Counselor Best, I would just refer to what your campaign, yes, I campaigned against that too. But sometimes after you look at the big picture, you do have an opportunity to change your mind. And so I respect your decision, but I think you should respect mine too. Okay, Counselor Lutz, I think you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will be supporting this motion today. And I will, you know, should it be successful, would support the implementation of a detransfer tax in Kings County. And I'd just like to point back to the slide that Mr. Livingston presented. And what I see there is we have two, two roads. I'm going to, you know, the first column and the last column. One column gives us half a million dollars. You know, this is basically status quo, half a million dollars and a tax rate increase. The other option with a detransfer tax of one and a half percent gives us $50 million in a reserve that we can use to fix the sewer and build a wellness center that we know thousands of people in our community want. So to me, when I look at, break it down to those two essential components, I think if you put that in front of the average citizen of Kings County, they would look at those two options and they would opt for the one that has the, a huge rate of return for the county, both in physical infrastructure, in terms of sewer and a wellness center, and also just our ability to function as a government moving forward. And then status quo, which applies a general tax rate to everybody in the county. I think what I, I know what most people would pick, and it would be the one that invests in our communities and builds us up as a, as a region and as a municipality. So, you know, we also, it avoids us paying a ton of interest. So one, you know, the first scenario with status quo plus a tax increase means we pay the banks a lot of interest and have to go to long-term debt. And then the other where we don't have to take on any debt at all. Really, I see this as very basic choice between those two options. And I think at some point, we're going to have to find increased revenue anyway. So whether we do it today or through a detransfer tax or through a tax rate increase down the road, at some point, you know, we have to address this. And a detransfer tax impacts the least amount of people and is the smartest way forward. So those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Lutz. Deputy Mayor Packford.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's easy for us to all sit here and discuss taxes and the impact that they will have on the residents of Kings County. Most of us might be sitting in a financial situation better than majority of our residents here. There is no denying that extra revenue would be beneficial to the county. I would never deny that. But raising a housing tax during affordability crisis makes the problem worse, not better. Now's the time to be creative with the resources we already have. Look at our spending. Look at what we do bring in. Assessments are on the rise. Every time a house turns over, we're constantly bringing in more. We're talking about hypotheticals with sewer system. It's not guarantees at the moment. To throw in new taxes to homeownership on young families and new residents seems to be a bit of a challenge that I can't stomach at the moment. Kings County is the only municipality in Nova Scotia without detransfer tax. That is not a weakness. It is our competitive advantage. It makes us a little bit more affordable than the rest. And right now, families need every bit of relief that we can give them. So I urge counsel, let's not make homeownership harder. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Sappington.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. With all due respect, I don't think that being the only county without a detransfer tax necessarily makes us have a competitive advantage, considering when I speak to headhunters, the primary question that they ask is, what are the amenities of that community? And for us to be able to recruit professionals and tradespeople, we have to have opportunity. And in order to have that opportunity, we have to have projects and reasons for them to come and invest in Kings County. And in order to do that, I believe that we have to be able to invest in Kings County. And as the third largest municipality, we are, I'll say it again, shooting ourselves in the foot by not being able to have the funds to be able to invest in ourselves. And again, I will stress that I too care about our residents, and I am trying to avoid property tax and raising the sewer rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Without committing to vote for or against this, this evening, I will vote for this because I think it's important to see that draft, to have knowledge of all the options before we make a decision. So for that reason, I'll vote for this in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Hiltz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Thank you for the presentation. Well done. By the numbers here, I think we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. My campaign about a year ago, I ran strongly against taxes, against a detransfer tax. Done a lot of research since then. And right now, we are, or I guess it was 2023, we were number seven for growth. The old argument, and I've had a few calls today from some people, the old argument was that it's a huge incentive of Kings County without it. We're number six. Cape Breton, East Hans, Halifax are the most rapidly growing. I think I've had, we've got 54% capital reserves, 29% of operating reserves where they should be right now. Either way, we've got to find some money. I've had 500 emails, phone calls, messages from people wanting a rec center. Professionals, just like Counselor Sappington said, have said they don't want to move here. There's no rec center, including a basketball court. I know years ago, just for a small example, Coldbrook School as helping coach KNBA, and the janitors had to unlock the door for people to go in and play basketball. Ridiculous. If the janitor was sick, everyone shows up, nobody there. That's just one small example. So 500 emails, I've had four against it. Ironically, one's a realtor, three are developers. Connect the dots. I too, I ran my campaign strictly against tax increases and against the detransfer tax. I was green, I was a newbie, and you know what? I have great guilt for that. But this isn't about me. This is about the whole county. I think it's a no-brainer that we go ahead with this and just see where it sits for October the 10th. The whole, the whole point of people saying that, oh, move to Kings County because there's no detransfer tax, ridiculous. That's old. It's a moot point. Most people, when they move, they have a secure job, and they come here for the, for their job, they come here for the amenities. And you know what? I believe with the exception, of course, maybe new home buyers and retirees. But overall, it's very obvious, we need some income here. And you know what? Out of 49 municipalities, we are the only one without it. And I think it's just stupid, to be very frank, stupid that we don't go ahead with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hiltz. Counselor Gates.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, when you touch on taxes and raising taxes or implementing taxes, everyone gets excited. And it's a new, it's challenging. It is very challenging. And we are definitely living in challenging times. However, living within our means, and I'm concerned that by implementing a new tax, what kind of an effect that may have on the overall distance. At this time, when I knocked on doors, one of the common questions that I was asked is where I stood on implementing a new tax. And of course, as my fellow counselor commented on, you don't understand the ins and outs of running the municipality. But at this time, I personally can't support the detransfer tax. Whether I would support it at a later date, I will not box myself into that. I may support it at a later date. But at this time, I cannot support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Gates. Counselor Harding.
I run on no detransfer tax. But this information here tonight kind of opened my eyes. I would like to see the CA's report and have a look at that, and then I'll make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harding. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. It's invigorating to hear a debate about such an important aspect of municipal politics. But I think Counselor Allen and just now Counselor Harding kind of hit the nail on the head. We're a little bit ahead of ourselves in this debate. The reality is, all we're looking for at this point is to give direction to staff to come back with a more detailed report of what a detransfer tax may look like. And I think that's essential, as Counselor Allen has said, so that we can continue on with this very important debate at the right time, which is October 7th.
Thank you, Counselor McPherson. And with that said, I think we'll move on to that the municipal council instruct the CAO to return municipal council on October 7th, 2025 with a detransfer tax bylaw and accompanying detransfer tax reserve policy. I believe we have a motion on the floor made by Counselor McPherson, second by Counselor Sappington. So all those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right, now, we'll move on. Everybody okay? Do we need a little break, or do we want to keep going for a little bit longer? Keep going? What? Go wait to the end. Maybe you've got better kidneys than some of us. All right, we're gonna go to the nominating committee recommendations. The, that will be read by me. And we have citizens' appointments for number 10A, that municipal council appoint, oh boy, Suman Jeha Muller, and Suman, I apologize if I butchered your name, as a citizen member to the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee for the remainder of a three-year term commencing September 2nd, 2025, and ending May 31st, 2026. Can I have a member of the nominating committee make that motion, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Peckford, seconded by Counselor McPherson. Okay? All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly.
Aye.
Okay, Counselor Best, are you voting for that? Okay, Counselor Best is voting for it, too, so motion carried. The next one is B, also appointment to the Joint Access, Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, that municipal council appoint Amanda Baker as citizen member to the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee for the remainder of a three-year term commencing September 2nd, 2025, and ending November 30th, 2027, and maybe again, if we could have a member of the nominating committee, moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Deputy Mayor Peckford. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, motion carried, all right. Board and committee reports. So, number 11, we have Kings Regional Emergency Management Advisory Report from Dan Stovall, Emergency Management Coordinator. Are you doing that, Scott? It was in the package? So somebody just want to move receipt of that report, please? Moved by Counselor Gates, seconded by Counselor Hiltz. All those in favor signify by saying, or signify by their, for or against, signify, or vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
I heard you laughing at me, Emily. Motion carried. All right, are there any verbal reports from members of the council? Counselor Sappington.
Forgive me, Mr. Mayor, but I do have to give kudos to our staff in participating with the African Nova Scotian Valley Homecoming. As Chair of Diversity, Kings, I feel compelled to say that Grayson, in particular, was fantastic on the bus tour that the municipality provided to learn of our valley African Nova Scotian history, and then, of course, the participating with the gala. It was a phenomenal event, and we had people come to Kings County from Texas all the way to Vancouver. Thank you.
Absolutely, and I want to congratulate you and your participation, Counselor Sappington. It was, did my heart good to see you and Counselor McPherson up there cutting a rug together. All right, we'll move on to any other external boards and committees? Are there any other verbal reports from any external boards and committees? Counselor Ga, uh, let's see, we got it flashing? Counselor Sappington again.
I have one more. I have to mention that the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities had a meeting in Halifax where the Minister of the Department of Justice was speaking, and so, Mayor, you were there as well as Counselor McPherson. There's lots of very important discussion happening, and I'm looking forward to going to a conference in Digby of the Nova Scotia Police Chiefs Association and the Nova Scotia Association of Police Governance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sappington. Counsel, Counselor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. We attended a recent asset management meeting in Dartmouth, Counselor Tim Harding and Counselor Peter Allen. And for me, it was a real eye-opener in our aging infrastructure that we are all dealing with as municipalities, towns, villages, and the need to be proactive rather than reactive. And by doing that refresher course, I think it would be very good to have maybe somebody from our public works at another time attend, because it was very eye-opening for me, and to bring to our attention the state of a lot of the aging infrastructure, and I just found it very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gates. You mean something like the sewer system in the mines? Proactive might be deed transfer tax, would you say that? No? Okay. Can we have one motion to approve those, all three, please? Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Harding. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, correspondence. We do have some correspondence for your, well, I guess I gotta wait and see if that got approved, don't I? Did it get, did they, did I miss, did I miss it?
That motion did pass.
Did pass? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, apologies for moving that so quickly.
I forgot to turn my head to check, you know?
I was too quick.
I think I'm getting tired. Counselor Best keep me here longer than I want it to be. Oh, yeah, I tried to. You mess that up. All right, that was motion carried according to the clerk, so we'll move on to 12. Valley Regional Foundation, for your information, we had a, a letter from them. We also, for your information, from Valley Renn, snapshot. We also had from Camp Brigadoon Village, thank you. We also had from the Kings Historical Society, thank you. So I'd like to have a motion to approve all, please? Moved by Counselor Sappington, seconded by Counselor Hiltz. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried, okay. Is there any other business coming before council? Going once, going twice? You might get your wish, Counselor Best. All right. All right, comments from the public. So if there's any member of the public that would like to come forward, we'd ask you to come to the podium, state your name, and address for the record, and that I need to remind you that you would have up to two minutes to speak.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jen Cole. I live in Hans Border. My address is 13966 Highway 1, and I am here to speak about the ongoing noise at the Hans Border Waste Water Facility Treatment. It has already been talked about, but I need to tell you about my experience. The sound is constant. It is distressing. It impacts my ability to rest and to feel peace at home. My questions are, which I have addressed several times to you, Mr. Scott Conrod, to you, Miss Mayor Dave Corcom, also to you, Peter, Peter Allen, and to you, Martin Keigho, with very little response, what is the actual sound level of the fans that are blowing? Are they breaking bylaws? And who is accountable for monitoring and enforcing these bylaws? There has been no public discussion. My attempts to get answers from you, and you, and you, and you, although thank you for responding, Mr. Keigho, have mostly gone ignored. These inaccurate deadlines, this lack of communication is already eroding trust, and to hear some of your decisions on things that you have promised residents of this Kings County and have been swayed so easily without any creative idea generation before diving into taxes is again eroding public trust and confidence. I don't want to argue, and I don't mean to bring negative energy to this council, but I am a voice for my community and for my home, and I am asking you, as a resident of Kings County, that you become more transparent, and that you show your accountability for the things that you do and you say, and that you provide honest communication. And I hope that you do take seriously the lived impact of the noise that has gone on four months. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Paul Dixon, I live at 1369 Spittle Road in Coldbrook. Just wanted to take a minute to speak on the deed transfer tax issue. Last year, I ran for council unsuccessfully, but at the time spoke against the deed transfer tax at that time. I'd like to say tonight that I was wrong in that statement at the time. For those who not be aware, I'm a business owner, so I own three businesses, employ 25 people here in the valley. I own 17 properties from Windsor to Bridgetown, so I pay property tax to all three counties as well as to the towns. Some of those purchases did not have a deed transfer tax, and some of them did. I can tell you, in terms of making those decisions and those investments, not once did I make that decision based on whether or not I was gonna pay a deed transfer tax. I work with clients in my business, my property management business, I work with investors purchasing property in all three counties, and I can tell you, the only time it's ever come up in discussion, I remember one time in particular, a client was buying a property in Kenfield. At the time, they did not have a deed transfer tax. He was buying a $2.5 million property. He was sitting at the lawyer's desk, and he said, guess what? I didn't have to pay deed transfer tax. And he had the check ready. That check was for $37,500, and he tore it up. And that's what we call leaving money on the table, folks. As you would know, I'm an advocate of the rec center in this area, I've worked hard towards that. But rec center aside, looking at services and infrastructure in Kings County, obviously, this area is growing, more and more people are coming here, the need for services and infrastructure is always going to increase. So it's either cut the services you have and save money and put them towards other things, or raise revenue. Raise revenue is property tax, as has been discussed here earlier, or you can find that money laying on the table. So ask yourselves, you're the only municipality in this entire province not charging a deed transfer tax. Does that make you the smartest municipality, or are you leaving money on the table?
Thank you, Mr. X. Okay.
Hello, my name is Michael Feeney. I also live at 13966 Highway 1 in Hans Border, and I just wanted to say, first of all, leaving money on the table could also be framed as leaving money in people's pockets. My wife and I live in Kings County because there was no deed transfer tax. That's anecdotal, but my wife is a dance teacher, her school teaches dance to over 100 students in Hans Border and surrounding areas, and that school may be somewhere else if we hadn't been able to afford to buy a house, and we were able to afford to buy a house because Kings County doesn't have a land, or a deed transfer tax. So just wanted to mention that, even though, obviously, it's, it's early in the process. I think it's sensible to get more information and discuss it, but I just wanted you to be aware of that in, in response to some of the comments. And I just have a quick question about the wastewater treatment facility. You mentioned belts and pulleys and some vague dates, and I would just like to know, are the belts and pulleys here? When will they be installed? When will the new motors be running? Do we need to wait for the silencer for that to happen? And what's like a firm date, that, you know, like, my dog can stop pacing every night because she can't sleep because of the sound?
Thank you. I think that was in the report this evening, and maybe we can have Mr. Keigho give you that information. By the sounds of things, he has your information and let you know on that. This, this here is an opportunity for you to come and make your comments to us and not enter into a debate situation. Two minutes, we can't do that, but, but I'm, I, I think it's a legitimate question, and we'll have staff contact you and, and provide you with that, if that's okay.
Perfect. Then my other, only other comment would be, it's been three months of torture, living that close to that facility and that noise, and I think you have to do better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing that there's no one else, and each member of the public has had their opportunity, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn into a closed session, and I, for the, for the benefit of the public, we will not be coming back into regular council meetings, so it's no sense hanging around, because we're not gonna come back into regular council meeting, save you the time of hanging around for not. So, and once that motion is made, I'm gonna declare a recess, whether Counselor Best likes it or not. Somebody make a move that we adjourn this into a closed session? Moved by Counselor Gates, seconded by Counselor Harding. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna take a five-minute recess, and then go into a closed session.